Morning people, it's me. How are we all? I'm up, I'm back and ready to go to court. Why must a man go to court, some must ask? A battle that's been ongoing for nearly seven years. Now, when we look at a fact, a man like myself, that is registered disabled, has had numerous departments saying he's got mental health conditions, has spinal injury, problems with his bones. So therefore, he cannot work. Because he cannot work, there's a such thing in England, a state benefit housing benefit. Now surely someone must be watching over these financial departments? Like a County Council, why is it nobody watches over the financial agreements of your department? Why is it? Is a happy just to shut files off? Although I can evidence it. As we'll see. There today people, 3rd of September, You'll also see at the bottom there people, there was a due a home visit. Disrepairing your home, the council's private sector housing team are due to visit on the 3rd, Friday, on Friday the 30th of September 2016. But hold on a minute people, are we not in 2023 now? Yes, we are. But yet, I am still going through goodness on what? When we look at what we've got here people, we have goodness knows how many hazards and faults, which have been reported from the Housing Act, from the House Enforcement Office. They've come, they've done their assessments of my house, they've asked our landlord to do the repairs. The landlord's ignored the repairs. Shall we have a look at some of these? Following my recent visit and inspection on your rented property, please find enclosed a copy of a letter that has been sent to your landlord. Please see the scheduled content, the scheduled content in the letter, for a full list of work that the council requires your landlord to complete. Your landlord now has until the 24th of April. We're now in fucking May people. To complete all required work. I need to, I will need to visit your property on or shortly after what she's done there. Now, Patricia Gott, who is known as Trish, a residential housing team, housing enforcement office. Can I ask why you're not doing anything would be with us? Why be with us housing and not doing nothing for a disabled man with mental health? Why? Schedule one housing problems, shall we have a list? Have a look at these. Front living room wall and ceiling by the front door are damaged from what appears to be historical leak. Historical, get that boy. Living room wall, living room, rear living room, sorry. Wallpaper on chimney breast is loose and sagging with water staining to right wall. Adjection to chimney breast. Kitchen. The manical, the manical fan is inoperable. Hazard profile two. Front living room glazing. It's a fan light, fan light in main access ingress door is smashed. Front living room, there is a hole in the wall at low level of the chimney breast, possibly where a ventilation cover has previously been. Not since I moved in the house seven years ago. There's never been one. Front bedroom, ceiling between window frame and sill has, has perished, leaving window sill in state of disrepair and allowing uncomfortable drought to enter the room. Bathroom, there is a gap between the skirting board and the floor covering. Rear living room, door to kitchen has a considerable gap along the bottom, but considerable, I could put my full hand underneath it. Front living room, the same. Rear living room, door to kitchen has an uncomfortable, I've just said that, loft. It was not possible to check the level of loft insulation, there's no insulation in the loft people. Whole house unable to accurate type of alarm above boiler due to difficult to reach location. Hazard six carbon monoxide and four carbon pressure products. Whole house unsuitable. Rear bedroom and rear living room, no carbon monoxide alarms in rooms where a fixed combustion appliance gas fire are situated. Rear bedroom possibly defective gas central heating boiler. A ceiling and wall in some areas have dark coloured staining, which may be significant on incomplete combustion of gas. Whole house, current landlord gas safety record, 19th of August 2022 people, has a gas central heating boiler as being present in the kitchen, when it is actually in the rear bedroom. Why is the council never picked up on any of these faults? Damp mould growth. Front living room, carry out a check to ask for a action because of the damage. Internal areas ensuring any potential problems are resolved to prevent further water ingress. Make good on completion. Rear living room, carry out a check to associate the cause of the damage. Initiated area same. Kitchen provide a fix of mechanical extraction fan to the exterior wall of the kitchen. The fan should provide at least fifteen air changes per hour with an external cover that prevents drought and be of a type which does not cause excessive noise. Excess cold, hazard profile two. Front living room, repair was smashed. Fan light glazing. Front living room. If the hole in the front is missing, ventilation cover simple and fit a new one. Front bedroom, replace the window seal to prevent drought and presence. Bathroom, fill the gap between skirting board and floor. Living room supply and fit drought strips along the bottom of the door. Front living room supply and fit drought strips along the bottom of the door. Loft, get the insulation sorted if there is none. Hazard six carbon monoxide and fuel combustion present. Whole house, in accordance with the smoke carbon monoxide amendment regulations 2022, a carbon monoxide alarm is to be fitted in both the back bedroom, if not already in existence, and the rear living room. Both alarms are to be fitted in accordance with manufacturer's instructions. Rear bedroom, employ the services of a registered gas engineer to check the current effectiveness of a gas central heating boiler. Gas safety certificate provided in six months old. 19th of August 22 and the occurrence may be more recent. Rear bedroom, employ the service of a registered gas engineer to check the current effectiveness of a gas fire. Landlord gas safety records provided in six months old August. The 19th of August 22 and the occurrence may be more recent. Hazard twenty five flames, hot surface etc. Rear bedroom, which is meant to be the child's bedroom by the way. The cover to the gas central heating boiler is less, is loose and can easily be removed exposing to internal workings. Rear bedroom, part, rear bedroom. Part work below gas central heating boiler is exposed. Rear bedroom, external pressure valve servicing the gas central heating boiler is situated at lower level besides the boiler. Hazard profile twenty one. Staircase relay may fitted carpets to give a tight fitting with no movement. Hazard profile twenty three, electrical hazards. Kitchen, check to see if the wires are live. Taking appropriate action to either remove or cover them as required. There's nothing but bare wires showing in the kitchen, there is no kitchen. I've not been able to use the kitchen since November because burst pipes exploded above my window. What did the landlord do? He says a man down switched the water off, reconnected the pipe, disconnect my outside tap. But, hold on a minute. All the boarding and the covering everything, what was covering the pipes originally? He's never fixed them, he's left all the wires just dangling. My kitchen pipes exploded, that could be my washer, that could be my dryer, that could be my cooker. Nothing's been replaced because they won't replace them. Kitchen install suitable kitchen facilities and redesign the existing, existing to include the following. A sink with hot and cold water supplies with a drainer on one side and a fixed worktop on the other side, other with a sealed watertight joint to be tiled or other waterproof splashback. A cooker space with a gas or electric supply in a suitable position at least 500 millimetres away from the rear door or a fridge. The cooker may have an adjoining fixed worktop and not be sitting. Not to be sitting immediately underneath a cupboard unless current gas safety regulations are again to and manufacturer's instructions as follows. A space for refrigeration and electric sockets of minimum one metre length. People, I can't keep on going on and on and on and on and on and on reading this. Feel free to pause it. Feel free to read what is what. Whole house is a current electrical inspection contract report EICR for the property. Wherever the Consumer Union has, has the last date of inspection as the 10th of the 6th, 2005. Now, I don't think I need to carry on with the faults of the fucking house. Now what I can say. Burnley Estate Agents and RPC Estate Agents, both in Briarfield. Burnley, Lancashire. Can I ask you why I had to miss you so many fucking times for the repairs to be done? There's still been no repairs done in six, nearly seven years. Let's look at a fact, Burnley. That's your estate agent, isn't it? Yeah. How can you maintain people's properties when you can't even fucking maintain your own? You cannot even maintain your own property, can you, Burnley? But didn't RPC, a man, a manager of the premises, a man called Majid, had to pass my files over to you to get the work done? Yep. So then why is it? I have over forty pages of pictures of work that needs to be done to my fucking house. Huh? Why? Are you not ripping the piss? Are you not taking money as letting agents? Every single month being paid for because I'm registered disabled. You know you're taking the piss. But then what do you want to do? You want to make threats to me. I've got the messages and I'm taking them to record today. The landlord has just got out of jail, he's done over six years out of jail and if he comes to my house, I'm gonna be out of my house the same day. Not possible dickheads, not possible. You cannot keep bullying your tenants. You cannot keep threatening your tenants. You cannot keep abusing your tenants. I'm thinking it's okay. Let's face facts, I've got kitchen cupboards in the, in the back room. I did have two, didn't I? What did you choose to do? You chose to come and take one of the kitchen cupboards and take it out of my house to go and put it into another house to do that house up. When in fact, what? Your actual paperwork clearly states that them cupboards were for my house. You got paid off the original landlord for that. So why did you go and put it into another property and not my own? Why is it I've been left for seven years in an unfit house? Damp, mold, cold, drafts. Hasn't your own feelings Lancashire County Council to do the inspections and proceed me further affected in my daughter being adopted? Because I could not offer my daughter a sufficient safe environment. So I hold each and every single one of yous accountable. Because that's a fact. If a house is unsuitable for me, it's certainly unsuitable for a child. Even the council have turned around and said. They don't get how I'm still in the house. No one understands why I'm still going through this after seven years. Why is no council rehomed it to the disabled man? Let's ask you all that people, why? Anyone got any comments? I don't know if comments are even on today people. Be all those that open the heart. No, I don't think comments are on for some reason. Not quite working this shit out properly, but it is what it is. At the end of the day, seven years people. I'm gonna stare at that. That's gaps between fucking walls causing nothing but drafts people. That's carpets at tops of stairs because they haven't put the carpets on right. Trip hazards. As you can clearly see people. I've took all the pictures and I've evidenced this for over six years. This is how they do the repairs, seriously people. Since when is a roof meant to be like that? You can see all the fuck up problems on the roof people. Clearly causing dampness, clearly causing rain to come into a kitchen. Towels are missing off roofs. This is damp people, this is damp patches on walls. Fighting an eviction for seven years, all I've wanted is repairs done properly. All my rent has been paid direct to landlords, direct to letting agencies. There you go people, as I can say, I could put my fucking hand right under the door. They say about that is a brand new boiler people. How is a boiler like that, a brand new fucking boiler? That's not no brand new boiler people. This is a letting agency taking a fucking piss, that's what that is. That's the top of a boiler people. This is how much they destroyed the house. We've got to ask, is this letting agencies actually a proper qualified? Are we actually using proper Corgi registered gas fitters? Because if so, if so, they wouldn't be leaving properties like this, would they? If anybody knows how to hashtag the council, feel free to hashtag them into this post. Every single fucking room has problems in my house. There's not one room that doesn't have problems. Isn't a windowsill people in a bedroom? Is that really suitable? Or should people be coming and fixing it? More people, more cracks through fucking walls. Anyone really wanna say that they'd pay rent to live in a house like this? Really? Why would you? Why would you Lancashire County Council keep paying rent for seven years when a landlord won't do repairs? Why is it you refuse to rehome the man? Isn't that the conditions a man's being forced to live in? Because landlords will not do no work? This is bathroom towels people around my bath. That's a bathroom ceiling. That is above my fucking front door. That the police did. The landlord's never fixed it. The police did it when we put my house through when I wasn't even fucking here. Nothing but damage after damage after damage people. Yeah. There is my back room wallpaper because of what's happened, it had a leak. They told me I had to wait a year for it to dry out properly before they would do anything. That's my back room, because a boiler exploded, a landlord wouldn't do nothing. That's kitchen cupboards broken. Landlord won't do nothing. Hot oil on a man's foot, a landlord wouldn't do nothing, he just laughed at the situation. I've got all the evidence people. That is stains on a wall from a fucking drug den next door. I have the messages from Burnley Estate Agent. Oh, don't worry, we'll make a claim on them. They fucked your house, we'll make a claim on them when we get the money off them, we'll fix your house. I'm still waiting people. Still waiting. Is that really suitable people? Your kitchen cupboard's coming away from your fucking walls. And landlords won't do nothing. This people is Nelson for you. Electrical bare wires on display. This is where the concrete has come away on walls people. Because of the cold and the damp. How much more must someone go through? Is it not enough that I've already lost my daughter to adoption, to forced adoption? But then what? You want to take me to a court and evict me? For what? Non-payment of rent? But hold on a minute. Did the new landlord not in fact stop the fucking rent? Did he not get RPC in November, which I've got all the messages, to stop the rent because they weren't maintaining the house? I believe he did. I also believe that I myself messaged the new landlord, the new buyer of the house because it got sold on a auction, asking over three times for his bank details. So then the council can actually pay his fucking rent. What's he say to me? Not interested in your money, I want you out of my house. Really? Bully tactics mate. Bully tactics, I'm coming for you. Get my point? You filed a fucking paperwork, I'm taking the paperwork today to the court. I'm taking all the fucking evidence. And I'm also telling them I've done this live YouTube. I'm also gonna make sure that this goes on to Rumble. I'm also gonna make sure it goes on to Facebook. I'm also gonna make sure someone puts it on to Instagram. Why? Because it's about time Lancashire County Council accepted responsibilities and took the responsibilities. After all, having not actually tried to charge me council tax. Having not taken me to court and taking council tax straight out of my income. Direct out my state benefit, you're taking council tax. Why the fuck are you doing that when I don't give consent? I don't give consent for the child traffickers, the Lancashire County Council, the police and all them to be taking money from my account without my consent. But yeah, you's going, you's doing that, don't yous? Lancashire County Council. You's then make claims that you's not paying rent. But yet you's can't do the inspections. Why? Why is it it's took seven years? As the proof shows, seven fucking years. One letter coming from Wayne Forrest, housing needs manager on the 30th of September 2016. Still ongoing in 2025 fucking three. Why? Why should anybody have to go through that? Why? I've gone through the mental torture and the false allegations of Lancashire County Council's Children's Social Services. I've had doctors deregistering me from their practices because I argue with them because they wanted to search my carer to see if she was Because I argue with them because they wanted to search my carer to see if she was recording. My dickheads, don't matter where we are, we have a rights to record. At the end of the day, some of you speak too fast so we can't actually take in everything you say. So sometimes we actually have to go back on what you've said. So the only way of doing that is by recording and evidencing for our own educational purposes. You don't have a rights to start searching people in the waiting room. Isn't that what you actually did well? Readied for medical centre in Nelson in Lancashire. So I have no doctor, I have no mental health team. I have no social services. I have no council support. You might as well say every man's got fuck all and he's facing homelessness. And not one person can help. How disgusting is that? I'm not in a position where I'm able to finance deposits. I'm a bit fucked. So I think the best thing I can go and do is buy a fucking tent. Permanent camping I think. After all, I've been going since what, November? Without a kitchen. I think I was just prepping me for preparation, being homeless, don't you? Have a good day.